I'll call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, January tenth, twenty twenty four. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of zoning board appeals are hereby notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter forty eight. The general laws of Commonwealth Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held. On Wednesday, January tenth, twenty twenty four, at the times indicated. The zoning board of appeals public here will be held by remote participation methods, public access is meaning shall be provided in the following manner. Real time access to the zoning board of appeals meetings available by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and entering the meeting ID. The zoom link is HTTPS colon slash slash town of Barnstable dash US dot zoom. Dot US slash J slash eight seven five seven zero seven nine seven four two eight. Or entering or calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. And entering the meeting ID eight seven five seven zero seven nine seven four two eight. Applicants represented as individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals. May appear remotely and may participate through accessing the link or telephone number. Uh, provided above documentary exhibits and or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to Anna dot Brigham. At town dot barnstable dot MA dot US so that they may be displayed for vote public access viewing. Uh, I'm gonna skip number three because this meeting is not, oh, sorry, this meeting will be replayed. Uh, via Xfinity Channel eight or high definition channel one zero seven two. It may also be accessed via the government access channel. Video on demand archives at the town of Barnstable's website. HTTPS colon slash slash streaming eighty-five dot town of Barnstable dot US slash cablecast public site. Flash question mark panel equal sign number one copies of applications. Are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two or emailing Anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot MA dot US. Uh, so now that's out of the way, we'll call the meeting to order with an introduction of board members, Herb Bodenseek.
Present.
Uh, Paul Pennard.
Present.
Mark Hanson.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Uh, Denise Johnson. You're muted Denise.
Okay.
There you go. Uh, Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Manny Alves.
Present.
And I am Jake Dewey, Jacob Dewey. Uh, notice the record this meeting, the meeting of the zoning board of appeals recorded and broadcast on the town of Barstis government access channel. In accordance with MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty, I must require whether anyone has recorded this meeting and if so, to please make their presence known. Being done, um, we, we don't have any minutes to approve today. And just for members of the public that are here, we are going to be continuing um, the items before us today for various reasons that we'll get get to each item. Um, the first order of old business is appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero. Aristohianus LLC has applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash twenty-five B twenty-two. And two forty twenty-five C ten drive-through for a proposed restaurant. The applicant proposes to remodel the former bank building and change the use to a food service establishment with a drive-through. The subject property is located at seven fifteen West Main Street, Hyannis, Mass. As shown on Assessor's Map, two four nine as parcel one five five. It's located in the highway business HB district. Uh, this was continued from May tenth, twenty twenty-three and July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. And September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and November eighth, twenty twenty-three. Members assigned were myself, Jacob Dewey, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson, Aaron Webb, and Herb Bodenseek. Um, we have received correspondence um, regarding this that. Um, we want, would like it to be in an in-person meeting and we have an in-person meeting scheduled um, in two weeks. Um, and so we have a, a, a uh, request to continue. Does anyone have any discussion on that?
Um, Jake, just, uh, I, it's, it's been known just to reinforce the fact that I, I will not be there in person.
Correct. Um, and Anna, as it. He, who are we gonna have that was gonna pull an in for in?
I, I believe it was Denise who was um, present at the, our hearing, so Denise would fill in for Paul.
Okay. And Denise, you're comfortable with that and. Are up to speed if you have any questions for staff in the meantime.
I remember the, the prior hearing.
Okay. Does anyone else have any more discussion regarding that, the continuation?
No, I just said, I assume we, we have on the agenda later to talk about our procedures about continuation.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll hold my peace. Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a move that we um, continue the matter to. Uh, January twenty-fourth. At seven oh one PM, appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero.
Second.
And a roll call vote, uh, Herb Bodenseek.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
And Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so that item is continued. Um, next up, we have appeal number for twenty twenty-three dash zero one nine, Kevin Y. And Corey L. Vilsant, Vilsant have applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash forty-seven two accessory dwelling units. ADUs, the applicant seek to remove and replace an accessory structure with a new structure. Accessory dwelling unit ADU, the applicants also seek to modify special permit number twenty twenty dash zero three eight to allow further build out. Of the property. For the accessory dwelling unit and additions to the principal dwelling. The subject property is located at three fifty-eight Flint Street, Marson's Mills, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map, one oh one as parcel one two one. It's located in the residence FRF zoning district. This again was continued from August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, and December sixth, twenty twenty-three. Um, members are assigned were myself, Aaron Webb, Herb Bodenseek, Paul Pennard, and Denise Johnson. Um, we again have a request from the applicant, continue this item. And possible modifications. Anna, uh, is that until the twenty-fourth? Are we gonna push it further?
No, um, uh, Attorney Corrine has asked for February seventh, twenty twenty-four.
All right, does anyone have any discussion about that?
Hi, pardon, I did see another uh, uh. Email stating the twenty-fourth of January, so are we still on the seventh?
Yes, there was a subsequent email um, after that, that requested G, uh, February seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'm off for uh, February seventh, yes.
Okay.
Could I ask you a quick question? Um, was there something in here where they're gonna re, are they withdrawing the ADU request totally?
Yes.
I believe so.
So what is left on this then? Oh, okay, good, good, good. All right, all right.
But we'll see, there's time they could withdraw between now and February seventh, if they decided to.
I just couldn't remember what else there was.
Um, so I'll make a motion that we continue appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero one nine to February seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I second.
Paul seconds, roll call vote on the continuance, Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
And Manny Alves.
In favor.
All right. Um, moving on to our last item of old business, appeal number twenty twenty-three dash three zero three four. Um, Bay Ridge Realty LLC has applied for a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL chapter forty B. Section twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. The applicant proposes to construct fourteen housing units, twenty-four bedrooms with four detached buildings and associated parking and site improvements. On three point nine five acres for rental purposes in accordance with MGL chapter forty B, seven sixty CMR. Uh, the unit mix shall consist of six one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. Four of the units will be restricted as affordable for low or moderate income persons. The subject property is located at nine hundred Old Stage Road, Centerville, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's. Map one nine two as parcel zero zero one, it's located in the residency RC zoning district. This is continued from uh, November eighth, twenty twenty-three, uh, members assigned. Was Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb, Mark Hanson, Manny Alves, and Herb Bodenseek. I was not assigned to that. That item. Um, the board is in receipt of a request dated January second, twenty twenty-four. To continue this to February seventh, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion on the request to? Uh, seeing none, I will make a motion to continue um, item twenty twenty-three dash zero three four to February seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Herb seconds, roll call vote, Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
I, I am in favor, Mr. Chair, but I guess this is something we're gonna talk about in the next agenda item, but. The rules of the board require that the representative of the petitioner make the request in person. It, it applies to this one as well as the prior one. I, I don't know if the representatives are on the call, but. At the, anyway, i- i- the rules say that after the first request for continuance, any subsequent, subsequent requests must be made in person.
Yeah, the problem, the problem is that we haven't, while we've approved the rules. We, we haven't, we have.
Let's keep the, let's keep, let's keep a discussion to just in a few minutes here.
I am in favor. I am in favor.
So, um, I, appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero three four is continued to February seventh, twenty twenty-four. All right, so that is the end of our uh, old business. We do no new business tonight. Um, we did receive correspondence of a letter from Paul Phalen regarding the demolition request of three oh seven Main Street. Um, Hyannis, um. I, I don't, I don't think. Is anyone have anything comments or response to that?
Read it.
Done. Uh, matters, uh, so I guess next up would be um, discussing um, Paul's um. Information and, and sort of our discussion of rules. Um, I did talk to Jim Kupner today at planning staff. Um, real late in the day today shortly before the meeting. Um. We still have not gotten feedback from Kate Conley, the town attorney. Um, he suggested that we. Possibly get together, that Paul, myself and I get together with her to try to hash this out. Legal department has been really slow. Um, I mean, one of my, my biggest concerns with these continuances is keeping the public informed of things. You know, how is the public supposed to track something that is just? When is it, when are we gonna meet on it? When is it gonna happen if it's just gonna keep getting continued, especially if people have to come in person to Town Hall? Um, and he did say one thing, when we have, when someone asks for a continuance, we do have the. Authority, it has to be mutually agreeable, but to say that we would like the abutters to be re-noticed. Um, before, in, in enough time before that next meeting. Um, which that, that helps me with some of my concerns about these con, the continuances. Um, but let's discuss, you know. Any other items? I don't know if we've all been together sort of since Paul, you put that together, so if you wanna give us a quick sort of summary of, of where we were with it, what we were trying to put forward?
Well, we, we um. We all voted and agreed upon what our proposal was. Uh, and then we decided to slip it to legal. Legal is not required to approve it for us to approve it. Legal is, is advice and counsel, and so my suggestion is, is that we proceed. With uh, with a thirty-day deadline, drop dead. Of officially forwarding it to planning and to uh. Uh, building commissioner, and then um, then depending upon what their comments are and legal, you know. We'll give them thirty days, so it's a drop dead deadline, and then we approve it. And subsequently, if they, if they, if they don't have time within thirty days, it becomes our. Formal rules and regulations, and if they, in the, you know, after that decide that there's something. Or we decide that something should be changed, then we can change it. I mean, we don't have to wait on them.
Great.
Anna, do you feel we have the authority to just make that decision? Uh, do we need an active town council as well, town? Elected council?
Well, I'm just concerned that the rules and regulations um. Should really be reviewed by legal, and I, I believe the town council needs to approve them. I'm not totally sure. But I was, I was thinking that the um, a policy might be easier for the board to set. I mean, this, this can certainly be discussed, um, you know, with Jim Kupfer and legal, but. A policy might be better.
There's no, look, the, the, the zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial board. Okay, policy doesn't cut it. It's either part of our official rules and regulations or it's not. Uh, policy does not enter in either the MGLs, the planning board, or the town's code. So I don't know what the policy, what, what this question about the policy is. Secondly. We have the authority, as I've shown in that, to approve our own rules and regulations. We do not need legal's approval. Nor do we need planning board's approval. And so that's why I'm submitting, I think it's time to official cut bait. We have, we have already approved as a board. Those rules and regulations. I think it's time for a read, public reading and to adopt them.
I agree, totally.
So I, I guess the step would be to. Our, our now town council liaison, I believe, is Betty Ledkey, so we, she would have to present it to the council, to town council.
It doesn't have to go to the town committee or the town council. It, nothing to do with the town council. Doesn't have to go there.
So Paul can ask a question, because that's how I read what you circulated as well, but I wasn't quite sure what the source of those powers are. I- is this in the town's bylaws? Like number four under subsection B, in, in your draft, says what you just said. That, that the board has the authority to adopt them, and then once adopted, they'll be presented in writing at a regular meeting of the board. And, and, and formally put in, 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 in place after that.
Right.
But is that something that, is that authority that's been granted to the board by?
Yes.
Town council?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have the documents in front of me, but, but the point is that the MGL. Gives the authority to the board and the planning board gives the authority to the board. I mean, the, the planning board doesn't have to give the authority to the board, the MGL does. It says.
Well, yeah, that's why I asked the question, because there is no reference to mass law. And it, in that provision, and frankly, I couldn't find it, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, I have to go. Back into my notes again, which I don't, I'm sorry, Manny.
It's okay, no, no.
But, but I certainly wouldn't have said that unless it were true. I believe the town code says. And I, I think it's the town code that says it's the planning board, I mean, the uh, zoning board of appeals has the authority to write rules and regulations.
Is it gonna hold? Or something fit to the court? Are we gonna get?
I'm sorry, Jake, you, you cut out there.
Breaking up.
We couldn't hear you.
Um, sorry, my, my internet's a little slow. Um, I, I guess I would just be concerned that we would be opening ourselves up for. Um, you know, someone to appeal something, an applicant to appeal something, if, if we, our. Eyes aren't truly dotted and T's crossed on this, and, and the, the person who has to clean that up, our legal department, they would have to go to court. And so I just would wanna make sure that they're in agreement with what we're doing, that they feel they can. Stand that up to someone at court. That's, that's my concern, but again, I'm just one vote, you know, one of us could, you know, Paul, you can make a motion, and if it's.
Yeah, I mean, Jake, they've had six months. I, I, I don't know what's going on.
There's a lot of things that are tied up that are very slow in the legal department, I think that's just.
Yeah, well, they, they're not controlling us. We control ourselves, they're the vice counsel. And as I said, they can review it after we've approved it, and if they find a problem with it, that's fine, but there's nothing in there. Um, that hasn't been, I mean, the research I did is. I don't know, it's not a pretty, terms of who has authority to do what, is stated pretty much in, in the, the beginning of that.
I, I totally agree with Paul, because if you look at this sheet today as an example. I think it must be known among the attorneys and whatever that, well, well, we'll just put it to another date. And without having, I think if they had to come and physically appear and give the reason. Uh, would make more sense, because I, it, it, it can't be that there's five or six postponements of an event. Um, unless someone can explain that their, their architect doesn't have the plans done or something, but. It's just jerks everybody around, the public and us.
But I, I share Jake's concern. I mean, I, I, I'd like to know, note, note this respectful. I'm, I'm sure. Uh, uh, you're right, but, but to have that absolutely ironclad type. That in fact, that, that, that the board has the authority to promulgate its own rules. And have them become effective. If, if that's the case, yeah, let's proceed. I just, a- as I read this, I, it, it's not in, in, in forty A. Um, but if it's in the town code and that's authority that the board has been granted to promulgate its own rules, okay, let's move on. But it, it'd be good to have that verified.
So Anna, if you, Paul and I can really push, can we, like, do we give Kate a fourteen-day deadline here? That we can, that she gets back to us and gives us her written opinion back on this?
Uh, well, um, the board can, can do what they feel is, is necessary. Um, you know, I'm, I can't promise that she'll get back to you in fourteen days.
Well, I, I suggest we put a thirty-day limit. They got thirty days. Either they respond to it or we adopt.
So should we say?
I'd be happy to.
February twenty-eighth meeting? That we're, we're gonna, we're going to make a one with or without. Is that our intent?
That's reasonable. And honestly, I think it's low risk on this, don't you? I mean.
Absolutely.
At this point.
Yeah, this is.
I think the biggest thing we need to do is make sure that we are able to notice all the attorneys or anybody that might be. I don't know if it's, if the obligation is on us, or if we just put the information out there and as a courtesy notify who we know is generally in front of the board. Often, or how that works, but.
Well, if anybody who, you know, for, for anybody who files for a special appeal, they get the rules and regulations.
Right.
Yeah.
Plus, plus they're published on the website.
Yeah.
Okay, so how would, Paul, what would you like to do to move forward, move forward with it? What would your proposal be? That we give them a thirty-day from today deadline?
Yes, I, I would propose that since we have already approved these, that we officially. Adopt them within thirty days. Uh. After noticing uh, the building commissioner, the planning board, and legal.
Okay. So Anna, you would, you would forward this to say that, I guess, that, that the boards made, will take a vote, that we make a motion. Um, that we're gonna, we're gonna forward these, we're gonna adopt these rules effective February tenth. And any new applications would be on that date would apply, it would apply to any new applicants?
Well, it would be one of the next dates, February seventh or February twenty-eighth.
Well, okay. So, in terms of just when it would take, take effect, or we'd have another vote on it?
Well, it would take effect.
Take effect, we've already voted on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So it would take effect with any applications made after February tenth, twenty twenty-four?
Okay.
I don't think we can, Paul, do you think we can apply it to someone who already has an application that, that's already been submitted in?
Anything after probably makes sense.
I think probably just, just to be safe, we would say after, after the date that we formally. Um, produce these as rules and regulations.
Okay, and then, and then that gives the opportunity on our February seventh meeting. Potentially for Attorney Conley to come in or between now and then to say, hey. You need to modify or whatever, and we could take a vote at the February seventh meeting to modify or. You know, bring them into whatever compliance she thinks is appropriate, or worst case, rescind them.
Right, and, and i- in addition to that, the whoever controls. The internet um, would have to include these in the zoning board's rules and regulations that appear. Uh, appear on the internet website.
I think that's relatively quick, right, Anna? They can make, things can be uploaded pretty quickly?
Oh, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Okay, um, so, so let's just take this to, to clarify, we're gonna um, put our. Rules and regulations into effect to any applicant, applications um, received. After February tenth, twenty twenty-four. That's the, the motion on the table.
Yes.
Do we need a second on that?
I think it's best we do. Sure. Um, okay, so roll call vote, Herb Bodenseek.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm also in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So Anna, will you just make sure, well, we'll talk before the January twenty-fourth, but we'll make sure that we have just a revisit of this on the agenda for February seventh. Just so we're just saying, yep, well, and we'll make sure the public knows that that's going into effect, just as a reminder, three days beyond that. Um, and if, if nothing's changed.
Sure.
And Jake, if we, you know, if, if we can arrange what you proposed with respect to a. You know, a conference call or something, part of that, to that, that would be fine, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's what we've been looking for for quite some time now, so hopefully we can. Get Kate on the phone and, and, you know, run through it.
Yeah.
Um, with her.
Yeah.
Um, Jake, a question, the, the, the. Comment you made at the beginning about, uh, you know, multiple requests for continuances, we should ask the applicant to uh. Re-notice the abutters. That's not in these rules, you're saying that should just be a condition to granting the request is that.
Uh, I mean, it's something, it, it's something we have the option to do. It has to be, from what I understand, from, from MGL, has to be mutually agreeable with the applicant. But if someone comes in and says, hey, we wanna continue this, will you guys give us one more? We can say, yes, we'll give you another continuance, however, you're going to need to re, we'll agree to it mutually that if you'll re-note of, notify all the abutters. Um, that this is the next hearing and um, et cetera, et cetera, which is just, is this a nice thing to happen in our pocket? I don't think we need to have it in the rules and regs, but it's just something we know that we have the ability to do.
Got it.
Um, for some of these items.
Certainly, when we see these agenda items come up that are highly contested, I mean, it makes sense, obviously, in some of these smaller ones. We don't wanna have, you know, petitioners incur a lot of expense, but.
I mean, frankly, i- if it's, and I'm thinking. Up to one, but that's contentious before us, maybe going beyond the abutters is something we ought to consider as well, let me repub.
Yeah, we.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, we could read public notice in the paper and, and, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, any other discussion or any other matters?
I was, I was just gonna ask one thing of the, my fellow board members. I noticed that the town council has moved their meetings to six o'clock, and um. I, I know it's kind of an odd night to bring it up, since this is like one of the shortest meetings we've ever had. But I'm wondering if, if the group is in favor or not in favor, starting at six instead of seven, so that. If we do have a prolonged agenda, we, you know, it kinda gets us out of there a little earlier.
I would have a hard time doing that.
You would?
Well, I have children that are young.
But I, oh, I, I thought that might be easier.
And, and I believe, don't, wouldn't we overlap with uh, HHD, uh, HHCC or something? One of the historic boards meets at six thirty or six before us sometimes, just in terms of TV scheduling?
It, there, there could be a conflict. I'm not sure um, that it's a conflict every single. Meeting night, but there, there's a lot of other meetings happening, especially tonight. So it would be, you know, sort of a case by case basis.
I mean, I, it's always been seven. I, I think we leave it unless there is sort of a public outcry that our time isn't good for. The public or something of that nature, or if our town council liaison would prefer to see us moved. I don't know.
No, I just, I just thought in terms of like, that some things that go on later and later, but um. I, right now, the last few meetings have been pretty short, so I, I don't have a lot of evidence that we're suffering into the midnight hours.
Yeah. I mean, well, we'll try to keep our agendas, you know, just pushing, try to keep the agendas set so that we're only here for. Two to two and a half hours is the ideal.
Okay, it's, it's not a biggie for me, it's just.
Okay, but no, it's always open for discussion, for sure.
Good.
Um, anyone else? Uh, next meeting, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, that is in person. Uh, and I think, as you said, we have a very full schedule for that night, so that one may go on a little while.
Yes.
And just a reminder, the Arista public comment is still open. Um, so we will hopefully hear public comment during that time in person and, and letters to us as well.
I have a question.
Oh, uh.
This is Jean, this is Jean Remmers, and it's directed to Anna.
Can you just say your address for the record, please?
Yes, ninety-seven Outpost Lane, Centerville. And it's regarding the old stage development at nine hundred Old Stage Road, I'm in a butter.
Okay, we just can't hear any public comment on it right now. Just, if it's around scheduling, that's fine, but nothing other beyond scheduling.
That is, I just had a quick question for Anna, if she had received my email with the second letter. I tried to, I tried to open it tonight, and it wouldn't open.
And when did you send that, Jean?
Uh, December. I believe it was, hold on, let me get my glasses. It was December thirteenth, you and I spoke. I said, you told me it would be posted a week before the meeting.
Yeah.
And I tried to look for it tonight, but it wouldn't open up.
Well, the, the meeting materials are not on the website, because everything was continued tonight.
Continued, so it'll be up for February.
For the next meeting that it's scheduled, all the meeting materials will be on the website.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey, Jake, a question again. Um, I had hear that um, the in-person meeting was on the seventeenth. Am I wrong there?
It got, it got moved. The applicant had, that we were trying to accommodate, requested moving it to the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so the twenty-fourth. Is in person.
Yep.
Correct. So Anna, I won't be, um, I'm trying to. I will not be there for the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Jake, though, I just wanted.
No, no problem. That's, yeah, and I think we agreed that Denise was gonna be um, filling in for you on that application. Okay, uh, so upcoming meetings, January twenty-fourth, February seventh, and February twenty-eight. Um, and we can make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote on adjournment. Herb Bodensee.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In, in favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
Uh, Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
And Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so we are adjourned.